Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 1st, 2022 meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. So it looks like, one, two, three, four, five. Looks like we have full board. I'm going to ask Sam as the alternate to be appointed as a voting member this evening. Yes, okay, very good. So I'll start with the roll call. Michael Proto, Chair.
Kate Stevens, Vice Chair.
Ron Stevens, Member.
Kimberly Queen, Selectments Rep.
Sam Terrell, Alternate Member.
James Baffetti, Member.
Curtis Sampson, Member.
And of course, we have Jay Minkar here as our Circuit Writer. Good evening, Jay. And Lou Karen, our Engineer. Good evening. All right. First order of business, public input on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda for this evening. Is any members of the public wish to comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close public input on non-agenda items. And we'll go to number one on the agenda. Corning Farm at River Edge. Application is for 66 three-bedroom townhouses. Units are proposed to be 16 four-unit buildings of multifamily housing on a 40-acre parcel at 540 Charles Bancroft Highway, Tax Map 22, Lot 14. The existing buildings are proposed to be removed, except for the existing house, which will be converted into a two-family unit. Owner, Corning Farm at River Edge LLC, applicant, DAR Builders, Reginald Morrow. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes.
Would you please come to the table, I guess, and introduce yourself to the board?
Hello, my name is Eric Mitchell. I'm here to present this on behalf of the owners. As a clarification, as the original application was submitted, we did discuss this last meeting. The ownership has changed, so its ownership is currently Corning Farm at Rivers Edge LLC. And it's also the name of the project is Corning Farm at Rivers Edge. Reggie Morrow is still the principal, but the property has changed hands. The last time that we were here, we had set up for a site walk on a Saturday. And also, some members were going to take a look at traffic at their convenience in the morning or in the evening after that. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that part yet, but I will talk about what I saw that and what we talked about at the site review. But first, I don't know if anybody wants to speak of what they saw for traffic.
Any members have any questions regarding the site walk?
Do you want to go first? That's a site walk of the traffic, which one?
Well, the site walk.
Site walk, okay, he wants site walk.
Okay.
No? Okay. I thought it was very well-attended, very informative. And we thank the applicant for the opportunity to do that and to take a look at the property. So, thank you. It looks like, I mean, tonight, I think we're going to be talking a little bit about the issue with traffic. There was a couple of things that were presented this evening. We have Mr. Karen's report dated January 17, 2022, to the Litchfield Planning Board. His comments, I should say, on the multifamily. I do have a couple of letters that I will read into the record when we get to public input from some of Butters. I also have Mr. Mitchell's, well, actually, it's from Dio, I'm sorry, Stephen G. Purnow, as to the trip generation and distribution analysis that was done for the project. So, and I understand we also have comments this evening from Southern Regional Planning. And we have, I'm sorry, your name?
I'm Carl Effick.
Carl Effick, who provided us with some information. And we'll probably have him speak a little bit on that this evening as well. So I don't know if you want to address, go further with the traffic or where you want to go in terms of discussion.
Sure. I can give you first the, what I saw at the site walk, things that we discussed. During the site walk, we walked the site. And that's if anybody wants to comment of what we did out there. One of the areas of concern, which is the last place we looked, was the intersection of the Northerly access point, where it comes out onto Route 3A. And it was suggested to see if we can move that towards the north, because it is coming opposite the house there on the other side of the street. We have looked at moving it, even though on site, we'd look to maybe move it up 50 feet to the north or something like that, would be between the houses. That is not something that is possible to move it that far, because two things. One is that the first units, pair of units that we have that are set off the road, we would have to move those over closer to the houses on Temple. And we would prefer not to do that. And secondly, which we may be able to do some, we cannot bend the road into a quick, like an S-turn to come up towards 3A, to come up from our site up and, you know, turn to the left and turn back to the right to move it down. We prefer to have it close to be straight up. What we might be able to do is move it down 20, 25 feet possibly, if we do a little bit of a S-turn, or if the access point isn't right at 90 degrees. Normally, you prefer to have a 90-degree entrance, because everybody has a fair shake of going in and out. They see it, and so no one is trying to make it quick, because they're in the, they're turning in that direction. But in this particular case, there's a possibility that maybe we could, you know, maybe bend it 10 degrees or something out like that. That would point the cars further away from the front of the house across the street. And also, based on the traffic report, a majority of that traffic coming from there is anticipated to go towards the north. So if they're, if they're headed tilted a little bit towards the north, it's not going to be an issue. But that's something that we want to talk about with the towns consultants, as well as our traffic consultant, to see if that's okay. Our preference is 90 degrees, come up, straight, stop, and everybody sees what's going on. But we may be able to move it down some. The traffic report that we was talking about at the last meeting, I believe all the board members were here to hear Steve Purnow talk about that. We have had, I've had a conversation with New Hampshire DOT. They had receiver application, and they reviewed it. They don't have any, I say major concerns, I don't know if they have minor concerns about it, but they're going through and finishing the rest of their review. But they don't have a problem with the traffic report and the counts and things that we have done. The one thing that they do need some additional input on is the sidewalk. We had talked about putting a sidewalk from the Northerly entrance to the south, all the way to the edge of the property along 3A. And that's something that Reggie had agreed to do. In talking to DOT, they said if that is going to be there, they would prefer it to be a vertical granite curb all the way along the length of the sidewalk and still have the sidewalk. And in between the granite curb and the edge of pavement, they would want to also have a ditch line for water to drain down along the road. That's a considerable amount of work to do in that area, in a narrow area. And also, it's something we have to take a closer look at. Our, my envision anyone, when someone said put a sidewalk along the road, would be to have a small grass swale, whether it's three to four feet, and then a five-foot sidewalk next to it, all at the same level. And that's what we would have going out there. But DOT had a concern about doing that. They suggested that they might want to see a vertical granite curb on the, on this traffic side of the sidewalk. They are not going to maintain the sidewalk. If that's, if the sidewalk is there, someone else would maintain it. And I presume it would be the town. So that's something that is open for, not necessarily discussion here, I just want to give comments. We're going to have to talk about what, what we can fit in there and what the state is going to actually agree with. Putting drainage all along the road is also considerable, because it is very flat to force the water come down through there. You have to do quite a ditch. I'm not sure if they would allow us to pave up to the edge of the granite, so that it would, just like a regular road with curbing, water goes down to the edge and then goes along the curb. But because the DOT wasn't part of that in terms of the design or wanting to make it part of their design, the road is something that the town was looking to do. We have to come up with a firm alternative to, or firm design that they'll agree with. As far as the sidewalk, I don't know if that's gone to town vote yet. Is that coming up for town vote, or has it gone?
It's coming up.
It's coming up, yeah. The town is voting, I believe it's March 8th.
Yeah. Okay, so they haven't voted for that yet?
Not yet.
And so as far as the, that's the thing relative to traffic, we can talk some more. And if anybody has any input on what the, if there was a vision for what sidewalks would look like around there in the commercial zone, which I presume we do the same thing here. I don't, DOT said they had not talked to anybody in the town about sidewalks along 3A. So I'm not sure if there's any discussions that have been internally either with the board about the, what the sidewalks actually would be built of, what they would look like.
It was a, just for some background, it was a private owner that talked to DOT about the sidewalk designs. And from what New Hampshire DOT had said, it was as long, I don't think that they weighed in too much on the design, though I can understand the vertical curb, because of the speed of the cars there. You'd want a vertical curb to try to bounce those cars off rather than going straight across a grass swale. But they did say that it would be, the Board of Selectmen of the town would have to accept the ownership of maintenance of that sidewalk. But I don't, I don't think we had anything about design from DOT. So it's really up to the town voters. And, and then with each application, up to Board of Selectmen to accept the design.
So, yeah.
Didn't the Warren article say six foot wide?
Yes.
At least.
At least, yeah. Right. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. On your first point, the Northerly access point, you're talking about that dirt road that's there today? Is that what you're talking about?
No, our proposed access point, which is coming out of the woods.
Yes.
That's the Northerly access point right there.
I thought when we were there, you're mentioning you wanted to move it a little more north. I thought we were going to maybe move it a little more south and between the two homes.
I don't know if you have a copy, but if you just look at the plans here, the way it is, it's to the north side of the house across the street a little bit. And what was looked at is to move it further north, so it would be a little bit more in between the two houses. So it would be moved towards the north a little bit.
North is Manchester.
Yeah, right.
So when you came out right now, you're at the existing person who wanted the road moved, and they spoke with the owner, right? And I thought then we were maybe thinking moving it in between the two homes. So you're thinking going the other way, between those two homes.
Well, in talking to, may I go up to the board here?
Sure, absolutely. I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand that. I just thought it was moving a little further south between the two homes, not in north.
I thought the same thing, Kim.
Right now, it's here, and this is the house right here, so it's coming out close to that. When I talked to Reggie, when we were here, I don't know, a year ago, whatever, with Concepts, it was this homeowner that he talked to that had a loop driveway through here, and the road is coming out closer. So Reggie had agreed to move the driveway further that way, so it would not impact where his driveway is through here. What we looked at on site is maybe coming from here up, if we could, 50 feet, put it in through here. So it's not directly across the driveway, not across from the house, it's sort of in between. What we can do perhaps is move it a little bit, but that would mean it would come down and turn and come back out again. We can't move these while we could, but these would end up being closer to the setback over through here. So to come all the way down over here, to move it all the way over, would be difficult, but they move it over some. And as I talked about, the possibility of a, say, an 80-degree intersection in here as opposed to 90, it could point in this direction just a little bit. So that car is going to the north, the lights would be shining down this way instead of right at the house or right at the.
So it's, you were talking about, but the buffering in there.
And you can't move it this way?
Why can't you move it south?
Yeah, I thought it was south.
Why couldn't you put it slightly over here?
Grade-wise, this goes up even higher. So coming down here, grade-wise, we'd have to be filling all the way down the hill to do that. Plus, we're getting close to the Corning Road, and we wanted to have as much distance as we could between Corning Road and where the access is, just because the traffic is backed up there.
I was just questioning whether it was north or south. I knew we agreed on moving it.
Okay. Yep.
And so you would have to move those units closer to the Butter there? You couldn't move them farther to the west, towards the second unit there, to make space for the road?
Grading-wise, the way that we, the way the hill is that goes down through there, we have more room between that set of units and the other ones, because of the way the grade goes down a little bit steeper.
Okay.
But we could move it some, but we cannot move it, if we were thinking 40 or 50 feet, I don't think we can move it that far.
So on the site walk, you mentioned that, that you would be talking to the, the homeowners across the street where that road comes, where the proposed road now comes out. Did you have a chance to do that?
We haven't talked to them. In talking to Reggie, I was confused. I thought the homeowner across the street is one that Reggie had already talked to, but it was actually the homeowner further down the street that he had talked to. The one, one lot over, is who he had talked to. But we will still plan to have conversations with him. Because I talked to Reggie about putting some plantings or something in the front of his house, and he said that's something that still could be possible. He'd be amenable to that.
Okay.
So we will speak to them.
All right.
Anybody else?
We still had an issue on Temple Street with buffering on those back ones, right? Like a hill or aprabites, one of those tall plants. That's still open, right?
Yes, it is. What we had talked about on site is a possibility, putting a fence at the end of the T, where you come up where the T is, and then plantings behind it. I think some of the plans, maybe three out of the four, show plantings anyway. Putting a fence there would keep some of the lights out as well. But in thinking about it more, the fence right there would cause a problem with snow plowing, because you'd want to plow, and then you're right there. So we can still have it flat and have the plantings there, but maybe even do more plantings, not just up next to there, but also down a little bit to do that. So we were still looking to screen the best we can, all of those Ts on it.
And I know, we did mention something about a berm. Is there a reason why you couldn't put a berm there?
A landscape berm at the, at the T?
Yeah, well, at where the, where the Butts with Temple.
The turnaround.
Yeah, we, we can do some of a berm. The only thing is it does slope down. So the more you go up with a berm, the more it goes down. But if we can plant a berm and have that be, you know, even if it's three feet, and have it three feet by six feet or whatever, as long as the plantings we put in it aren't going to get blow over, uprooted, or whatever, because it's a berm, we can certainly look at doing that. We are looking to put a screening there, but it probably just would not be fencing, because of the, putting snow up against it is just going to be a problem.
Jay, did you have any questions?
I think those are, those are probably my main questions. But has there been any thought to the disposition of the land on the southwest corner? I'll call it the conservation land.
Yes, we did. We had a meeting with the Conservation Commission, and some options were discussed. I believe it was a non-public session. And I think the commission is willing to work, and certainly the applicant is willing to work with the town. But we, that has to be looked into a little bit further.
Thank you.
But I can say that we have no plans or proposals to do any work along the river. So the, you know, we've talked about it, that it's very steep. So we don't, we're not going to have access down to the river. But we're also not going to have, if there was any trails or anything, we're not going to propose those down along the river. We prefer the river to be, stay as remote as it is, because there is wildlife and that that is in the river and the bushes and the cottontails and some other things that we have noticed. So that we want to make sure we don't do anything from a public standpoint to encourage people to go down along the river. Not that they couldn't walk out there if they wanted to, but we're not going to promote it with a walking trail or anything like that. Plus, you can't see the river very well from the top of the bank, and it isn't that good to look at. And we also did discuss, one thing is regardless of how, what, how the land ends up in terms of ownership easement, whatever, that the trolley lane that is there, which is a trail right now, we could look to have that also loop a trail up underneath the power lines to come out back up towards 3A, to come out back into the, into the parking lot of the piece next door. So it would be an additional trail. So instead of just going right straight over and dead-ending, it'd come up through the power lines back out to Mills Falls.
Lou, did you have any comments? I know you did give us your, your report. I don't know if you want to touch on the highlights or?
Yeah. Basically, the highlights are that the, this, the traffic from the project, not a major contributor to the traffic on 3A. So it's, as evidenced in the traffic study, the build versus no build version is virtually no difference in level of service. The biggest flag here is, as you can see on the second page, I did trying to summarize a lot of charts and tables for you, is the bright red on Corning Road. So it's projected within 11 years, not at 11 years, but sometime between now and 11 years from now, that intersection will go into failure. Anyone coming up Corning Road, the estimated wait time is 322 seconds to make a left turn in the morning. So when people have to wait more than about 60 seconds, they start taking bigger risks. You know, I'm tired of waiting here, and you got a smaller gap than you should have, and you shoot out, and next thing you know, crash. So what this means, and there's other documentation in the report that says at that time in 2033, 11 years from now, Route 3A will require a left-turn lane. No different than what you see at the end of Albuquerque. Basically, you look about the same. So you begin talking about sidewalks along 3A. You've got, I scaled 15 feet from the state right-of-way to the face of that building that's there now. And the evidence out there today is that people who are in left-turn lanes today, wanting to make a left on Corning, the people wanting to go south are scooting around them and crashing into the brick walls. That's, that's basically what's been happening. So eventually, you will need a strip of land along 3A to do a lane widening. Otherwise, you're going to live with a disaster out there. So the thought of a sidewalk with grass whales and a house 15 feet away, it's going to be really, really tight. Just something to think about. The other part with the snow removal at the end of the, at the end of these driveways, regarding a stockade fence, which is a very definitive light blocker, if you have one in there. I live in a condominium project, and when they do snow plowing, two things happen. One is, the first pass, you keep the main drives open. Because people are parked in front of their units. You can't get in there and plow, because cars are there. But you keep the main drives open, because people shouldn't be parked on them. So in a case, and what I have observed is to clear our driveways, they have a pickup truck, and they keep them clear. And they said, to heck with the parking spaces until the storm is over. Then they come through with a smaller piece of equipment, a Bobcat, because of this limited space in front of the units. Can't get a pickup truck in there, so they have a Bobcat. What could easily happen here is that during those initial snow events, they could just push all the snow into that turnaround, because no one's going to be using it during a snowstorm. And then come by with the Bobcat, and instead of pushing it up against the fence, I could push it east and west to the end with the Bobcats. So I would still personally favor the solid barrier for blocking lights as compared to blue spruces that are, you know, when they grow up, they're, they're pretty nice. Aprabite is probably a little bit better for density. But the stockade fence is a nice visual block for the, for the lights, the headlamps. So, but I think what the traffic report has really said, 3A is, is going to be, within 10 years, probably where the breakpoint is, a little hard to tell. Probably go through his numbers and adjust the 1% growth rate that he used and figure out at what point it really breaks down. It's probably seven or eight years from now, not 11 years. It's 300 and something seconds, that's a long time to wait. No one's going to wait out there that long.
Yeah.
Not going to happen. So two, two issues. One, you really want a sidewalk along 3A. It's probably not the best idea with people driving 46 to 48 miles an hour through there, the 85th percentile that they measured. The other thing that you're not seeing in this traffic count they did in January are trucks. You're not seeing gravel trucks and paving trucks out there. So they did truck counts, which is normal. But you're not getting the truck volumes that you will have in the peak month of August, which is what all these traffic numbers are based on. Goes back to the peak month of August. So throw in a bunch of big orange trucks, orange and black trucks in there, and not going to make that intersection work any better.
I don't see an issue with, as far as sidewalk goes, just having it just to the southern entrance. Because you're right, you're not going to, people are going to want to walk along, like closer along those townhouses away from 3A versus, especially in between that old house and, and 3A, that's going to be, feel like a tight squeeze also. So would that be, would that be a good compromise there to have just the sidewalk just go to the southern entrance? Because that's where, the goal of this is to attach the Albuquerque bike path and extend that north, try to include some of these neighborhoods. And from the private owner that was suggesting sidewalks and the crosswalk, the crosswalk would be further south than this development. So I don't see an issue with, if, if the sidewalks end up being required through, you know, zoning ordinances, having it just go to the southern entrance, because it would be safer either way for them to walk along the residential street. That's in your development here.
For the development, certainly that was, that's easy. But it was my understanding the town wanted something for the, for the public's benefit. And that's why it was going to be shown along 3A. That is still for private drives on that, and I'm not sure that they want, the owners out there would want, either from liability or insurance or whatever, to have private parties walk through there or bike through there to come back, go in one entrance, back out the other. But certainly, we don't have an issue with doing something from our entrance down to the, down to our lot line. That's not an issue.
Realistically, I think the majority of the traffic would be coming from your development. And otherwise, further north than that, it's only Temple Drive, I believe.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're not going to come out Temple Drive and walk along that little slither of 3A, just to get to, get to here, to be able to walk to Morris Falls. I would see it more as they're cutting through their backyards, cutting onto one of these streets here. And at that point, it's only those handful of neighbors. I think it makes sense to only have the sidewalk go up to the southern entrance, especially if that means that leaves more room to alleviate the safety issue at Corning. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Because I think it is accounting for the pedestrian traffic started by this development, if they can walk along the residential street to get to the sidewalk and then eventually, hopefully, seeing that sidewalk continue all the way down to Albuquerque through other
Yeah. Anything else, Lou, that you want to talk about in terms of?
I think the biggest thing that.
Was the traffic?
The biggest nut here is that within, within 10 years, something has to get done with Corning Road intersection, like was done at Albuquerque.
So I don't know, you said that DOT didn't have any major concerns. I don't know if there's a way to reach out to them, Jay, maybe have a discussion with them. I mean, this project, and it certainly is substantial on, you know, on that road, and you know, things are changing quickly. I don't know if they, I don't know if we maybe have a discussion with them about how, you know, what are the alternatives or, I don't know.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess now would be the time to talk about my my observations once again.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
On the, on February 15th, between 4:25 and 5:22, I felt like a human calculator or adding machine as I hash marked every car that went by either north, south, or and onto Corning. Either coming from Corning or going onto Corning. Going southbound, I sat in front of the stable in my car, and I counted 368 vehicles going southbound. I counted 301 going northbound, and I counted 123 either coming into or coming out of Corning. Taking a left out of Corning to go southbound was much harder than it was, of course, to take a right and go north. But those are my counts. I do not know, and this, these were physical counts that I sat there, and, I mean, I couldn't be interrupted. However, the only saving grace, I think, when I say saving grace, because I think this is a large number, and I don't know if this contradicts or complements the studies that that were given to us, but the only thing that I think that really helped this from being a steady stream of ongoing traffic was the fact that I know that the light that is down near the Irving Gas Station afforded a little bit of a break in between every now and then. Otherwise, it would have been just a steady stream. But I did want to share those figures with you since I spent so much time doing hash marks.
That was afternoon?
It was between 4:25 PM and 5:22 PM on a Tuesday.
Kind of in line with the counts. Counts actually have more cars than that.
I also did an observation on February 15th. I was there at 8:15 to 8:45 in the morning. So a peak was at 7:00, and I was there at around 8:15. The, I'm not, well, I wasn't concerned much about the traffic, but the sun is right in your face when you're trying to get out of the farm area or that other road further north. But your new entrance, I think, further, going further south was fine. There was trees there. So just to let you know, you know, it's not much we can do about the sun in your eyes, but when you go to leave, you're trying to get on 3A, it's going to be a problem. At least at 8:15.
We have with us this evening Carl Epik from Southern Regional Planning Commission. Carl, did you want to add? I know you did submit a, looks like a regional impact statement or a recommendation.
Yeah, please. Mr. Chairman, who's the board? Again, my name is Carl Epik. I'm with Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning, and I'm the principal transportation planner there. So what I have, and I'll give you each a copy of this letter. Simply, you guys made a determination that this was a development of regional impact. And from that, we didn't get an assessment report about what they, what triggered a development of regional impact. But because it's on Route 3A, it's in close proximity to Manchester, it's only less than a mile from the line with Manchester. Obviously, this is an important regional route. And so I have, I don't know, six, five, six comments for you. And many of these things we've already touched on, so it'll be a little bit redundant. But basically, we have, again, five recommendations. The first one is to make the new driveway intersections more visible for increased safety. As we've already established, the speed limit's 40 miles an hour here. The 85th percentile is 46 to 48. And what we suggest is making sure that the street lighting at the actual intersections onto 3A at the new access points help to make vehicles on 3A more aware of the intersections and and for when vehicles are entering, accessing or egressing from the development, that they're visible to people along the drive, along the the route. It says here that the SGP Traffic Analysis, which is the Stephen Purna Traffic Analysis, finding seven auxiliary turn lanes for the entrances entrances are not warranted. We recommend reconsider this finding and take into account the numbers of cars and their speed along 3A, plus the circumstances of cars merging onto 3A from Corning Road. We've already talked about all this. Further comment is if cars are accelerating to merge onto 3A, while others are decelerating to turn into the complex, the situation could become unsafe. Second comment is, again, about something we've already discussed, provide internal sidewalks and or paths within the development that connect to nearby paths and sidewalks. It is recommended the applicant provide options for transportation, I mean, other than by personal automobile. Access to recreational paths would reduce trips on New Hampshire Route 3A and provide healthy options for active transportation. While Route 3A does not currently have sidewalks or side paths, the new development is adjacent to Morse Falls Conservation Area Trails and is linked by, to the trail network of the old trolley track. The development is also just north of nearby Albuquerque Avenue Path. We've covered all this. Number three, provide better site distance at Corning Road and plan for a crosswalk, which we haven't exactly spoken about yet, and improved geometry to the offset intersection. That intersection is quite offset, 90 degrees is an ideal intersection. That's a bigger project, I think, than than what we're considering here, but it's something that will be need to be looked at, especially considering when the intersection fails within eight, nine, 10, 11 years. A crosswalk here might be considered to access Corning Road and as a link ultimately to Albuquerque Avenue Path, which is on the other side of the road. With the widening of the intersection and with auxiliary lanes, a crosswalk design should be considered to a center refuge island for safety and the use of rectangular rapid flashing beacons. You know, you press the button, flashes, because, and then if you widen the roadway there today, it's probably, what, 12, 12 and two threes?
Yeah.
30 feet?
Probably two feet, Joe.
And with the auxiliary lanes, it bulk out to at least 50, maybe more. So you're talking about a 50-foot wide crossing. Even with, you know, even at an intersection, even with a crosswalk, even, you know, with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, 50 feet is a long way to go on a road where cars are going 48 miles an hour. So if the, if a crosswalk is to be installed there, it should be, ultimately, you're going to need a crossing point, and that point would, at some intersections, ideal, but safety will be really important to to develop some sort of a safe crosswalk there. So that should be considered is what I, what we're including here. Number four is to consider the cumulative effects of other developments north and south of this development area in addition to the impacts from this development in determining potential mitigation for safety and capacity preservation along Route 3A. Gets back to the the failure of the intersection. We are aware that another site to the south is being considered for a new gas station convenience to development. Unless additional parcels will be conserved or an access management plan exists for the Route 3A corridor, there are likely to be additional developments that add traffic volume and may increase congestion and safety issues and the need for improvements. Consider a build-out analysis and resulting infrastructure improvements in this development's portion of those cumulative impacts and the cost share. Lastly, number five, impact of proposal to existing residents. This is something we learned about through Jay, but it's not a regional concern, but the design creates substantial impact due to future resident vehicle lights. We already talked about this crossing, which, you know, is a local concern, but, you know, it also is a potential safety issue along 3A if there is an accident, you know, from the lights and from the traffic movements. The applicant should consider realigning the entrance to ensure minimum impacts to existing residents, and similar concerns exist for the residents along Temple Drive, which we already talked about. Those are my comments. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, do we have any extra copies or is that something I can? Oh, yeah. I've got a bunch of copies.
I did receive a, well, no, I didn't receive. Joan received a letter, a email from, I believe it's National Grid. I'll read it into the record. It's dated January 18, 2022. Joan, thank you for sending me the plans. I took a cursory look to see what activities are being proposed, and we will need a review through our internal stakeholders and written permission. I am attaching a cover letter, but will need to work with the engineer to send other documentation requests, a review fee check from them. I assume you received the, an email from National Grid, or have you been in conversations with them?
Yes, we've been in contact with them. We do have an actual, well, backup. We contacted them a year ago just to talk about what we wanted to do out there, what we could or couldn't do. And one thing that they confirmed is that, you know, you can't put a septic system underneath their lines, but if you want to put a detention pond, as long as it doesn't skirt their access, you know, that may be something they can do, and that's what our proposal is. So we will show that to them, but we had talked to them, we have talked to them since that letter request came out. And what they requested us to do is to measure the height of all the lines, which is not an easy thing to do because you can't stick a wire pole up and measure it. But we did, when we staked out the center lines for our sidewalk, we measured, you have to do it geometrically, get a line up this way and a line down that way. And so we have the elevations to give to them. Their concern is not so much anything we're going to be doing is going to hit their wires, but they want to make sure that if you have an excavator excavator out there digging a hole for the pond, that it's, there's no way it's going to be an issue. We've also had agreed to do the heights of the wires up along 3A so that if there was a trail or anything put in through there that came underneath the power lines and went down towards Morse Crossing, they would know and see that, yes, it's all right. Or if there's a possibility that the barn might be moved down there, and I'm not sure where that stands, we would at least have the information so they would know the heights of the wires. So if anything was to go down that way, we would have it. And we'll be finished saying it up. Hope to do that this week to get it over to them. And so we do have, we know we have an application to do, and we have talked to them.
All right. At this time, I'm going to actually open it up to public comment. I do have two letters to read into the record this evening from the Butters. I don't see anybody else here in public other than the applicants. All right. So the first letter that I have is from 3 Temple Drive, Litchfield, New Hampshire. It's dated April, it says dated April 22, 2021. I don't know if that's when it was, this, this might have been one from earlier, I'm not sure. Says Litchfield Planning Board to Liberty Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, to whom it may concern. Recently, I received your certified letter with postage dated 4/8/21. It arrived Monday, April 19, 2021, at approximately 3:15 PM past the time that an email or certified letter could be sent to you. Therefore, I'm writing this letter for the next planning board meeting regarding the proposed development at 540 Charles Bancroft Highway. I work second shift in Boston, and since the meetings are virtual, I'm unable to log into them while on duty. I have some questions for the developer and or town of Litchfield for the next meeting. Myself and four other homes abut the property at 540 Charles Bancroft Highway, and I do realize that the developer is in business to make money. I would like to know that since there are 39 acres on the site, why do most of the condos have to be right up against our property? There must be other ways to factor so many condos in this site. Maybe there should be less? Question mark. If each unit is three bedrooms and assume one person per bedroom, at the least, that's at least 192 people moving in next door. Then assume two cars per condo, that's 128 cars next door as well. Then there is the construction noise and movement for however long that takes. Once built, there will be traffic, police, fire, ambulance, and delivery traffic to deal with as well. How would the developer like this to be next door to their residents? Then there is the quiet enjoyment and view that will be lost. How does the developer and town plan on dealing with this? There must be a wall built so that no egress is made to our properties at the bare minimum. The ideal location for an exit slash entrance is where the farmhouse sits now. Even if the house is moved, a traffic light should be placed there to prevent car accidents and the safe flow of traffic. Thank you for listening to my questions slash comments. I hope that changes can be made to accommodate all the current residents of Litchfield before the project is started. Sincerely, Thomas Campana. And a second letter. Okay, this one is from January 11, from the same Abutter, 2022. Town of Litchfield, New Hampshire, Planning Board, to whom it may concern. My name is Thomas Campana, and I reside at 3 Temple Drive, Litchfield, New Hampshire, 03052. I am also the owner of this property. I am receipt of your certified letter updated that was mailed on January 6, 2022. This letter is to inform you that I am in opposition to the proposed building of 66 three-bedroom townhouses at 540 Charles Bancroft Highway. My property abuts the farm that is currently there. I have lived at 3 Temple Drive for over 10 years and have enjoyed the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. The proposed building plans will disrupt forever my quiet enjoyment of my property that I purchased for just that reason. First of all, 66 three-bedroom units would mean at the least 198 people moving in behind my property. If they all drive, then traffic will increase enormously as well as the addition of police, fire, ambulance calls, postal service, other carriers such as Amazon, UPS, FedEx, et cetera, traffic. This new traffic problem will include not only volume, but the necessity of a traffic light and the reorganization of the intersection at 540 Charles Bancroft Highway. Under the proposed plan, my Litchfield neighbors will constantly have car headlights coming into their homes, which is unnecessary. There was also, there will also be numerous accidents from cars turning and stopping. The intersection would have to include moving the current farmhouse as it stands in the way of a viable intersection. Then the possibility of trespassers on Temple Drive because there are currently no fences on the property lines. It was never necessary as it's quite, as it's, I think, it's a quiet neighborhood. With construction, who will pay for the fencing? Not the Butters, as they did not conceive of the problem. And if fencing of the appropriate height is supplied, now my quiet home is now a fortress, not what I wanted. Also, if approved, the construction period of weeks, months, years, including noise, dust, and all the other problems that brings. Again, a situation pushed onto the residing Litchfield taxpayers. Litchfield is a beautiful, quiet New Hampshire town, and I think this type of construction would ruin the area. I don't think the situation would be as severe if single-family homes were built or even if the townhouses were constructed on the other side of the property. But I asked the proposed developers, how would you feel if 198-plus people moved in behind your property after 10-plus years of peace and quiet? I would ask if you have to develop the property, build a single-family home community. That would be a great compromise. Thank you, Thomas Campana. So those are the Butters notices. And seeing no other members of the public, I would this time close public input. Does anybody have anything? time close public input. Does anybody have anything they want to add? I guess the question is, what's, for you folks, what's the next step? Where are we, where are you going in terms of, are you going to be, I know, I mean, we've talked a little bit about the traffic issue. I think that we know that that is a major issue, a major issue of concern, especially for this board. I don't know if that's something that we need to look at further. What is the will of the board, I guess? I mean, guys?
Well, I'm unclear about what we're doing here tonight. What's the purpose? And is anything being asked of us tonight?
Well, no, not really. I think this was an opportunity, because we had one on the sidewalk, and an opportunity for the board to sort of comment on what they saw, maybe if they had questions for the applicant, to address those issues that they may have seen, things that they saw. We had continued the hearing to this evening. So the action, if it was the pleasure of the board, would be to continue the hearing again to a date certain and allow time for all these issues to be addressed.
Okay. I mean, the issues are, I think, are the same that we've talked about quite a bit, right? It's the impact on the neighbors, especially on Temple Drive, but also the ones that are directly across the street. I mean, it is a question. It's a fair question. You know, most of these units are going to be close to the line of those homeowners on Temple. That's how you designed it. And I wouldn't be happy about that if I bought one of those houses on Temple. So there was a, there's a significant impact to those, for those people who are going to live there. And I'm not sure even just having a three-foot berm and some plantings are going to mitigate that concern. Also, then, of course, the people who are going to get the headlights coming out of the project, especially at the north end, and that's yet to be resolved. And then, of course, finally, the issue about traffic. And, you know, these studies don't take into account whatever develops in that other site that we've had a presentation on for the gas station, and what that is going to do. I don't know if there's other possibilities of development, but, you know, in some ways, looking at it as it is now, and the traffic as it is now, which it seems is already problematic, is going to get worse if you develop that site and you put a gas station, convenience store down the street a little bit. There'll be more people that will be wanting to access that from different parts of it, either from Corning or from, you know, from north of where the site is. I don't think that makes the traffic problems any less. I think it probably makes it worse. And I don't think we yet have a good plan for dealing with the traffic problems at Corning. I mean, I think that the engineer, Lou, is correct that, you know, there's already problems there. We've said that from the very beginning, and it doesn't seem like the plans are addressing that. And it's not just now. It's, you know, a planning for what we think is going to happen down the road a bit. You know, we're just inviting, I think, difficulties, accidents, congestion. So all those concerns are there. At least they have been for me from the very first time. I don't think we're yet addressing those, at least not to my satisfaction. And so I would encourage the developer to do that because I think in order to get my support, we're going to have to address those in ways that are meaningful for those people to address those concerns.
And if I might respond, that's one thing I would like to do between now and the next meeting, is to talk a little bit more about the traffic with DOT, with both Lou and Jay, and also Southern Hampshire Planning, if necessary, about what may be able to be done with Corning. But what I can say is that Corning is a problem today. It's a problem even if this project isn't developed. It's a problem in 10 years, even if this isn't developed. And we were asked to do studies, which we did. We were not initially required to do a study for DOT on Corning because they said it doesn't, that doesn't affect you. But we ended up doing one at the request to go through and look at that. We understand there's already a problem with Corning, but we're not being asked by DOT to fix it. And it's not a, should not be requirement of one development to fix an issue that's been there. It is there today, and it's going to be there down the road. So that what we're looking to do is to try to do the best we can to help minimize some of that impact and to make sure that there's things that we can do that perhaps will limit the problem in the future. What I can say, or I would say, is even if this project never goes anywhere, something's going to have to be done with Corning Road, period, even if we weren't even there. So maybe if that's part of what we can look at, you know, we talked about a sidewalk without specifics as to what it would look like, but maybe if right-of-way land was left and for a turn lane, so it could be put in down the road, then maybe that's something that is a better solution to the traffic concern at Corning, you know, down the road once it is. I would say probably if we did put a sidewalk in, a strip of land or ditch and then a sidewalk, there wouldn't be room to put the turn lane in unless you're going to drive on a sidewalk, which you're not going to do. But possibly, given all the circumstances, to make sure that there's sufficient room between the edge of the pavement on 3A and the house that's there. We know there's a wall there that has to come down, and it is close to the road. But maybe if that's a left, even if there's not enough right-of-way currently, maybe give a little bit more. So if there ever was a turn lane that was going to be put in, we would have the room and the provisions based on this plan to do that, you know, down the road. So one thing I would like to do, well, there's two things that we would be doing. There's a lot of technical details and things that have to be done with the plans that both Lou and Jay had come up with in terms of things on the plan itself, which we have been working on and we're continuing to do. But I think what I would like to do in the sooner is to talk a little bit more about traffic that I just talked about and what improvements physically, again, maybe meeting with DOT and everybody together, say, okay, what's a good solution for this? And how much can the developer, you know, participate doing that?
Yep. So April 5th would be the next logical meeting date, I would assume, if you think that that's enough time.
Which one?
April 5th.
Yeah, that was not sooner than that. But that would, I think that would be, if, and I'm just asking the question, is everybody willing to meet if we needed to with DOT and get together and just, you know, hash it out?
Yes.
I think that's doable. Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, the traffic is the big issue in here as well as the abutters. And that issue is also going to need to be addressed because I don't know if I'm necessarily comfortable right now with the way that this site is sort of constructed, where you have these buildings sitting right on top of these neighbors. Something to maybe look at, but certainly, it's going to have to be something that's going to be, that the board is going to be able to say, you know, if we're going to approve this, I think it has to be looked at. I think that's just, it's just, it can't be ignored. And obviously, the traffic issue can't be ignored. And I understand Corning is an issue, but also, you know, keep in mind that our focus here is on the site plan itself. And I think that's where we need to really make sure that it comes together. But those are my comments. Obviously, the board, other members of the board have their comments, so.
Going off of Mr. Chairman and Mr. Maffetti had just said, what is the reason you have the four units right up against the abutters instead of maybe spacing out a couple of units to that open space right here to the left? Is that, is the elevation?
That's wetland. Well, it's not all wetland. There's small wetlands. But then, when you put setbacks on them, if you look on the plan right behind you there, there's just little wetlands, pieces of wetland there, but the...
A good one.
Once you put the buffers on them, it just doesn't give you any, let's see if you have the plan right there. You can see they're just small wetlands, they're not very wide. But you put buffers on them, and that's what takes out that whole area. But on one hand, that's good from a wildlife standpoint because it's still all treated, it'll stay treated. There's some wetlands there, and it's some habitat associated with the river that is still going to be there.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Has there been any discussion about putting a fence along the entire property line instead of just pieces of fences at the turnaround?
We haven't discussed that. I'm not, it's, you know, something we can, you know, look into, but what the abutter said is, you know, you're going to have to put a fence down there, but then you're going to be, you know, closing me in. So I'm not sure whether that's a solution that they want to see or not.
Right.
And I think maybe, you know, it may be more of a, not a physical visible barrier, so it looks like a wall, but maybe something, if it's other additional landscaping, that sort of just distracts you a little bit from what's going on. But we'll talk to Reggie and see what, based on the comments from this abutter, let's see what it is that we can do in addition to what we've already talked about for the landscaping and potential of fencing at the turnaround.
Okay. And I'm sorry if we've already talked about this, but had you looked at only providing the southern entrance rather than straddling Corning with the north and south entrance?
Providing a what?
Only having the southern entrance and just not even having a northern entrance to the property.
We haven't. I think the, you know, part of the concern is there'd be a lot of traffic coming all the way in front of those units coming out. And we wanted to split it up also for emergency access and that kind of things. They have two different ways to get into the project. That's why we did that primarily.
Some property developments like this will set up that secondary access point, but they won't actually make it usable. Either they'll leave it undeveloped but prepared for future development. Is that something that could be proposed? Or, you know, they'll have a gate there, so it's not main access. But if at some point in time you found that it would need to be a regular access point, is that something that could be done? That way, when we do decide what's going to go on with Corning, it could be factored into how that got developed? Is that an option? Rather than fully developing that northern access, you just have it left as a plot for future development? So that way, when we do decide whatever has to happen with Corning, you could kind of plan it all at the same time rather than already have that access designed, then have to redo it all. I would think leaving it...
The majority of the issue is that northern entrance.
From a traffic standpoint, the northern entrance makes sense because with the bulk of the traffic going from the development to Manchester, they avoid Corning Road. You send them all to the south, all those cars, you got to go through the intersection. So it would only make the performance of the intersection worse.
Okay.
And the only thing we really would be looking for is a lane widening because you need more pavement to put in a left-turn lane.
Right.
That would be the only impact, I think, on that northerly drive from doing an improvement at Corning Road is when you do your tapers for your pavement widening. It could have a minor impact on that intersection, but from a traffic standpoint, I'd rather have more of the cars going out the north entrance to avoid Corning Road.
And that's for the north-to-south bound, turning left onto Corning? For that left-turn lane, you're talking if you're coming from Manchester going south?
You had northbound traffic on 3A is so-called opposing traffic, and it makes left turns more difficult because you don't have the gaps. And we're not looking at a traffic signal here. It would look essentially like what you see at the end of Albuquerque, except that you'll need two lanes, a right-turn lane, left-turn lane on Corning.
Right. So you have to widen both Corning, right, at the mouth of it?
Yeah.
But you'd have to have, you have to widen 3A to have a left-turning lane?
Yeah.
To go on to turn onto Corning.
So you're looking at an extra 12 feet of pavement, 11 or 12 feet.
Yeah.
And to that note, widening Corning may require right-of-way from the houses on the other side.
Yes.
Something to keep in mind. The only other thing I've just thrown out to the applicant is I heard what you said about gray, but I think if you could take a look at the possibility of moving that northern entrance a bit to the south so that it, one, avoids the headlights into the house, but it could also allow you to pull those units, the lower units that are closest to Temple Drive, a bit away potentially if that road came in a little bit more to the south, which would certainly be preferable than trying to move them any closer to Temple Drive if you were to try to shift it to the north, because I don't think that would be desirable.
Right.
And as far as the sidewalk goes, we are looking at, or the intent is a crosswalk, but further south than your property. So I don't think that it would be in the plans that there would be a crosswalk at Corning and then a crosswalk, you know, a few hundred yards down. So that's where I think just having a sidewalk just to that southern entrance, I think, would be sufficient because right of that, your property line is the end of the northern commercial zone. So that's not going to be part of that anyway. So we're really trying to connect Morris Falls and St. Francis Way, and so the school there, the neighborhoods there, and then the crosswalk being further south where these other houses that are along 3A wouldn't be expected to have, you know, we're not going to expect homeowners to be putting in a piece of the sidewalk like that. So they wouldn't, even having the sidewalk all the way up to your northern entrance, it's not like we want to encourage homeowners on the other side to be crossing 3A, not at a crosswalk. So that's where I think it makes sense to just at least reach it to that southern entrance, to the Morris Falls line there, and then the town would take it from there.
So I guess this is a question from Mr. Epic. But you had talked about a crosswalk, and I wasn't quite sure I understood. You were envisioning a crosswalk near Corning?
Potentially.
And so, but I just want to make sure I understand what your thought was about that and why that would be the place.
If you, because Corning is potentially a destination, you got to cross somewhere.
Right.
It's the one intersection along the property. Ultimately, you'd need to get down to Albuquerque, correct? You could cross further down as well, just simply as part of that intersection improvement. It might be a logical place.
So you're thinking that the people that came out of neighborhoods in Corning would want to, could cross, if they wanted to do a walk down by Morris Falls, and then maybe eventually to Albuquerque, they could?
Or to the, what are you going to name it, conservation property?
Morris Falls.
Morris Falls.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just, you know, you don't want it to be mid-block between two driveways or between two roads. You want it ideally at an intersection. People driving expect things at an intersection. And that concept of an island refuge, I mean, you know, I don't think there's a signal going here anytime soon, but, you know, imagine what you can imagine. It's possible someday. It would be a logical place to have a crossing, at least related to the development of this.
Well, and, you know, if, I mean, there's a proposal that's come to us about this gas station, and, you know, I could envision maybe people that living, you know, close to the end of Corning would, you know, would take a walk down, you know, younger people maybe more inclined to, they'd have to cross at some point to get over to the gas station.
Well, I mean, if you imagine a path facility like along Albuquerque Avenue, I assume people bike on that. I haven't witnessed it. So it's the same type of thing. If there was something on Corning, you'd get to it here, you'd logically cross. And if there was, again, a wide path on the west side here, they'd take you down to the gas station. Who knows what else down there?
I mean, ideally, you know, having a sidewalk, the whole property would be great, I think. But practically, because of the things that Mr. Karen talked about, and the need to widen 3A at Corning, and not being able to do that if you're going to keep that house there, right? It's just not practically possible to do it. I get, you know, and I get Kate's, you know, suggestion, which seems to make sense as an alternative, given the practicalities that we have. But... given the practicalities that we have, but.
There's, there's a lot of conflicting needs and demands.
Right. That's right.
Moving a path, you know, off of the main road is, you know, logical, but it, people that aren't going into the site, that it's not logical. And it's also that it, it, it welcomes people to come into the site, which is, I think, the concern.
Yeah.
That was mentioned. So, you know, a public facility like a, a nice path like on Albuquerque Avenue, it's logical for it to be along 3A. Ideally, it'd be buffered from the edge of pavement, you know, with some sort of a, you know, but again, more, that's more space.
Right.
I think so, you know.
And so maybe this is the question for the developer, but are, are the plans as they are now, do they provide for sidewalks or paths within the development?
No. And the main reason is that we really don't want to open it up to the point where it looks like a big wide open development. There will be limited people walking up and down the streets and limited traffic. It'll still be safe, we still have curbing and that kind of stuff there. But we really don't want to put sidewalks in and have it look like a downtown, a, a main street where there's a lot of people coming and going and maintenance of those. So it's more of a calming type of thing. People will walk up and down the street, people driving up and down are going to go slow and make them take care of what they need to do.
All right, but so that the, you're saying for the people that live there, they, because they may walk around the property, they, they wouldn't be any concerns if they're walking in the street inside the project itself. Like there wouldn't be a designated walking path for them if they.
The only path that we would have, there would be a pathway going over to the trolley line.
Yeah.
So they can connect to that and possibly off of the, if there's other paths on the, underneath the power lines that are proposed to go in, we would connect those off of those two. The, the hammerhead that is in the middle of the project has four buildings on it. That may continue out because that's open right now, it's grass all the way out to the other edge. So we would, trails would go from the edge of pavement out to the exist, either existing or proposed walking trails.
Okay.
When you mentioned, Jay, about moving the road further south, how, how far were you thinking?
I mean, just enough to avoid shining headlights directly into that house.
I didn't know if you wanted it further down.
Yeah, no.
Worrying about that 300-foot line of sight that you needed.
You can, you can already see the way it takes a turn to the north. If you just shifted it a little bit to the south, you could avoid going directly into that house.
Right, okay, that's what you were talking about before.
Again, there, there could be grade issues. When I look at the topo, I don't see the grade challenge, but, you know, maybe I'm missing it.
All right, anybody else?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the tax map, it's about 40 acres, right? And you have 66 units here built on about half of that. So that brings it to 3.3 dwell units per acre, which is more than the 2.5 limit that we have. Has that been addressed or am I missing something?
You, you look at the whole site when you calculate.
You look at the whole 40 acres. Okay.
I think there's a calculation, if I might, in the upper left-hand corner of the plan. That shows how we calculated the number of units. We did, took the total acreage, we did subtract out the, the power line. And we also subtracted out the wetlands as well as the, I believe the floodplain was subtracted out because those typically you couldn't use for development. So we just used buildable acres to come up with the density.
Okay. That makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
My name's Dan Weldon, I'm a co-owner of the property. And, and when we brought this to the board, I don't know when it was, quite a while ago, we were asked to try to preserve the house that's there and, and we are doing that. Now I'm starting to hear that the house might be in the way of the sidewalk and moving the road and a turning lane and whatnot. So I, I just want the board to know that if the house becomes more of a problem than a benefit, where we are open to removing that and whether it, and I, I think we did look at moving it and it's, it's really not a feasible thing, but we wouldn't be opposed to taking it down if that were to be considered more of a benefit. If the benefit of taking it down exceeds the benefit of leaving it there.
Right.
We're, we're open to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, that was my thought as well. Because, I mean, I understand that, you know, the house has a history. It, it, on the exterior, it certainly doesn't have any historical characteristics. It's all been redone and modified. So I guess if you get to the timbers and, you know, maybe you can find something that's more historical. But it is, it, it is a trade-off, right? I mean, there's, there's some sentimental attachment, I think, to the house. But the trade-off is that it, it is going to be difficult to do some other things with the house situated the way it is.
And we're leaving it there because we were asked to by the town. Our, our initial thought was that we were going to have to take that down.
Oh, I remember that.
The town asked us to keep it there, we made provisions to keep it there. But now if, if the situation is, is different, is presenting more problems than, than need to be, we're, we're open to, to
Yeah.
Getting rid of it. That way you'd be able to put a sidewalk in a turn lane, whatever.
Right. Yep.
I think in that area, I think the historical and sentimental value of the house is more important than the sidewalk. Because I don't see a sidewalk being built along Corning anytime soon to connect those neighbors. That would be something that would be at a cost to the town and I, I don't see that being put through anytime soon. And I don't see a lot of foot traffic along that road. It's, it's pretty, you know, it's heavily trafficked and there's not much shoulder there. So that's where I think we need to put more importance on the house than the sidewalk in that area. But even more than the house would be the, the safety of the drivers, that has to come first. So if we can widen that however DOT says needs to be to take care of Corning Road and the house can stay, I think that would be the ideal situation.
Mainly the question is, if you widen that road, which you're going to have to, I think, how close to that house are you going to be? Now you're going to have cars that are going to be, you know, with fairly close proximity to the, to the, to the front of that house.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we need to find out from DOT, like you said, you guys are going to talk this month and we'll see what comes of that.
Okay. What was that?
You said that you were, you were going to talk to DOT about
Have discussions with the Department of Transportation.
With the House Consultants as well.
And if that means that, you know, the house ends up being a problem for safety concerns around Corning, then I think we'll have to address that then.
Sense of, yeah. Tapers are.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Jay, do you have anything else that you want to add or?
Uh, no.
You're good. Lou, anything? Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. All right. Seeing there's no other questions, I guess what we'll do is we can probably have another meeting, well, April 5th, you said, Jay? At 7:00 PM. So that would be our next meeting on this site application, so.
Just, we just need a motion to.
Yeah, right, so we're going to entertain a motion to go to a date certain for April 5th, 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion, have a second, grab further discussion. All right, all those in favor of continuing this matter to April 5th, 2022, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed abstained, motion passes. One, two, three, seven, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Any reports from any committees?
Get that with me.
Thank you for coming, good night.
Thank you for the report. Just as from the town, we have our voting on March 8th from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night at Campbell High School. NRPC, our next full commissioner meeting is March 16th. It'll be at 30 Temple Street in Nashua. And that's what I have for reports.
Is that a Wednesday night?
That is a Wednesday, March 16th.
Okay. Conservation meets this Thursday here at 6:30 in Town Hall. The Capitol Improvement Committee is going to be meeting in March at some point, I think after, after town meeting. So it'll be after that. Nothing to report from the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee. Kate, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, the budget committee doesn't meet till after town meeting.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Lou. Okay.
Nothing to report from here.
Okay, very good. Let's see, we're also, any other business this evening? I know that the minutes, obviously there was an issue, nobody, not everybody got them, is that what happened or they're not?
I didn't have security to look at.
We should just wait till the next.
Okay, so we'll defer the minutes.
Didn't make the agenda anyhow.
It didn't make the, that's true, I was going to say, but it isn't on the agenda, so, okay. Any other business, do they, Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
I do.
Go ahead.
People on Facebook, there was a very active posting about commenting on the behavior of some of the cars driving on Albuquerque. I don't know if anybody had saw that. I saw it get up to like 58, you know, whatever, and I know it was, kept, kept going. I did post and say that we, as a, that I was a member, you know, I work on, I'm on the planning board and I do meet with NRPC on a monthly basis because one of the comments was, we need NRPC to come out and do traffic counts or, or look at the situation. So I did say that we have the director at our planning board meetings and I said the next meeting was today. So I did call Jay to let him know, so I wouldn't surprise him tonight with this. So a lot of it was concern of obnoxious driving, tailgating, going over the white line, speeding. If you see other posts, we know we do have police patrols there, you can see the police also, you know, making comments there. So I did say I would bring it up at this meeting. If the citizens want to maybe take it further or have some kind of a meeting, we can maybe do that. I did say if they went to the town website and went to the planning board department, went over to our master plan chapters, chapter five, they would see their transportation chapter. And if they look for the word calm, they'd find our calming traffic measures that we had spoke about in 2020. So there was some comments after that, you know, because you could see the pitches of the paint on the road or some speed bumps and, and some people did not want the speed bumps, obviously, for plowing. So our master plan chapter said we were looking at it and maybe in the future we would have to address some traffic calming measures, so. So I just wanted to let you know of that, that I would bring it up to the public during this meeting.
So, so did people go and look at the chapter?
Yes, because they came back, someone said, yeah, I don't like the speed bumps. It is great, I'm glad we did that in 2020.
And it is something we should look at.
And it mentioned Albuquerque.
But, but to that end, i- if there are locations along Albuquerque where the town is looking for counts, our, our counting season will be starting in April. So, you know, we can schedule counts at certain locations if people want them.
Is it so much the counts or more just how people are driving?
Speed limits.
Because I don't think, the counts aren't going to tell you that somebody's driving.
Yeah.
Rude, you know?
Right.
How do you measure rudeness?
I know.
Finger, you know?
I know. I live on that, my house faces Albuquerque. They speed, there's no doubt. I'm out there weeding my garden and they're coming over the white line and, you know, it's, it's, I don't want my son playing in the front yard. The road is beautiful, the bike path is beautiful. It is a standard I think New Hampshire wants to have. It's, it's, the road, I think, is one of the most pristine roads probably in the state. It's not like it needs repair. I don't know if there's been fatalities, I haven't heard of any fatalities on that road. But you, I don't think we can legislate people driving that way. But maybe there's something that we could have a conversation about of slowing things down, whether it's more 35 mile an hour signs or.
We do legislate about how people drive that way. I mean, it's a violation of the motor vehicle laws to driving, if you're following too close, it's a violation. If you're driving to endanger, it's a violation. If you're speeding, it's a violation. I mean, this is really an issue for, for, for the police department to be enforcing the laws that already exist and to maybe think about putting up one of those, those.
Oh, yeah. Shows the speed when you're.
Right, that's a conversation we can have. What can we do to help? We can't, you know, obviously people are going to drive how they drive.
How about, you know, being out there more aggressively and ticketing people?
That's another conversation we, but again, let, I would say, I agree, these are options that we all need to explore.
And that, you know, it might be a conversation for the Board of Selectmen to have with the police department or the chief.
But if we want the citizens to come in, you know, I'm going to need a, you know, something like that, but.
But it really is an issue, I think, either for the Board of Selectmen and other police department, you know, to be talking about. Because people aren't saying that the speed limit should be changed, they're saying that it's not being obeyed. And that some people are being overly aggressive and trying to go too, I mean, 3A isn't any better, I gotta say. We drive that every day.
I agree.
You know, there are people that, that tailgate all the time. And especially through that school district, you know, when it drops to 30, you know, good luck, you know.
Starting on the rhythm.
Yeah, and they just and, and, and so it is a question of, you know, of a, of sometimes just having a greater police presence and starting to write tickets to people.
Yeah, so that's, we need a discussion, so.
I think that the traffic count comment was more, and I, more in favor of is, should the speed limit be raised? Because it was meant to be a corridor through town. I personally don't agree with that. But I will tell you that, that road is so wide that had, like, some days if I'm really tired, I'll put my cruise control on because I'll find myself going faster than I need to be just because there's not enough visual impact to tell you that you're going too fast. You don't realize when you're going 45, 50.
Right. It is.
I would really like to see a cyclist's lane on that road, take up some of that pavement. Get those cyclists, give them their own lane because they cannot use the multi.
That's, that's a good idea.
But people on the side, if you're on the path, if you, it was a neighborhood at one point that wasn't connected. That was not a main drag in town, it was a neighborhood. It was voted to now, you know, instead of going around Robert's Road, you went down to 3A directly. Then they voted to connect the two Albertirkies together, it became a main drag. But when people moved there, it was a neighborhood. If you live on the side of the bike path, that's great, you can get to the bike path. But if you live on the streets on the other side, good luck trying to cross that road. And I've had four accidents at my stop sign, my neighbor's getting hit. And somebody came into my yard, supposedly dropped her purse in the car and went to get it. Said a roll in the car this way, she came in my yard this way. I mean, this is what you start to say. It was a neighborhood.
It's also why we re, we recommended crosswalks.
Crosswalks that are painted.
In the master plan, that are, that are clearly painted and built in.
I mean, it's nice to have all that, and the bypass, great, but if you can't get to it, because people are going 40 and downshifting at 50.
That's what I'm saying, if you can make the road feel smaller, it encourages that.
Right, and we had a picture of that.
And we talk about that too, you know, designated bike lanes on either side have the appearance of narrowing the lanes.
Yep.
While not interfering with emergency vehicle access in any way.
That's right.
But the lanes are too wide. I mean, they're designed as highway lanes.
Yeah.
So again, it's more
Right.
if citizens want to do something, I mean, we, I, I don't, I'm not sure it really steps. We can take your input on the counts and fatalities and all that. I'm sure the police department could offer information, you know.
But isn't it aggressive driving?
They're saying bumper, somebody comes up behind you quickly.
That's a violation of the motor vehicle laws.
I, I agree.
It's aggressive driving, you know? It could be a crime, depending on, on how aggressive they get.
Let's just say people on my side of the neighborhood don't let their kids cross the street. You want to get to the bike path, don't go across the street to the bike path, go down this street and go around, you know. Don't go across the street to the bike path, go down the street and go around, you know? Which is a shame because they want to use the bike path.
Right. For the most part, I think we can all agree that the, a speed bump itself isn't the right idea. But they do have a variation of a speed bump, which is a longer version. So instead of having a speed bump that's like a foot wide, that really just destroys the shocks on your vehicle. It's more of like a five foot gradual mound, which won't really mess with the plows. It really does have a good calming effect on vehicles if you put those every so many feet, which I know some people in town might not appreciate, but it really does slow down traffic when you, when you know that those, because if you're going too fast, any low vehicles are going to bottom out on that.
Right.
You know, and that'll definitely slow your vehicle down. But it, but it also doesn't abuse or shock your vehicle like a speed bump would. It's not gonna destroy a snowplow.
Put a crosswalk on top of that.
You could put, and you could, and, and some, so I've, I've driven through plenty of communities that that's what they do. They use the mound as the cross.
Does that affect the snow plowing?
It won't, no.
Right, because it's gradual.
Because it's, it's, it's like a five to six foot gap, so the plow just goes up and over it, just like what any normal.
But usually paint it too. So it's distinct, you can see it coming. And that's also a visual cue to just automatically, people see something, they slow down. They see open road.
Now, is this, is this mostly only happening between? And forgive me for not knowing these exact roads, right here, the Town Hall going towards three A or is it pretty much the whole length of Albuquerque? Like where are you seeing most of the violations? Because me, most of the time I'm seeing the, the faster driving. I would say probably from, what, what's the road right out here?
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest going to three A. I mean, I don't see it down at the other ones. I don't drive there as much, but most of the time I see the faster vehicles right after they leave here and open. Because that's where it really opens up. So probably.
My personal experience is the same. When I'm driving near the high school, I, it seems calmer. There are stops.
It seems narrow. There are some stop signs and, and it's, I think the woods themselves are closing a little bit more. So you're, like you're saying, you're driving down a road that seems more like a back country road rather than opening up to three A, which is what happens right after Hillcrest. It just opens up.
So.
You're on an airport runway.
Stops has big a difference too.
Sure.
Obviously. And we only have one crosswalk on the entire length of Albuquerque and that's at Hillcrest.
Yes, right.
Even at, even at the stop sign at Pinecrest, there's no sign.
And that's, I think, the, the stop sign that gets blown more often than Hillcrest.
I agree.
People go through Pinecrest stop sign.
They do.
Yeah. Jeez.
Really? They go through that? Where Pinecrest and Albuquerque meet?
A lot of rolling stuff.
It's a slow roll.
Which way do they go on Albuquerque? They go through the Albuquerque one or the Pinecrest one? They just don't see it. They, one time. I've never seen anybody, wow.
Yeah, that's pretty rough. So one of the more interesting things in, when I was in Brazil was to observe on their highways, and they're not really highways like we see. But, but the major roads, they have speed bumps on a regular basis. And it's more like what you were talking about.
Yeah, like a mound.
Not a, yeah, but, but they, they do that in, in very you know, with a purpose to slow people down at critical sections. In fact, I think, and along some of the roads, some of the places where they have businesses, like restaurants, they'll do it to encourage people to stop. It's pretty clever. But it does have the way, I mean, they, they just, they drive that way all the time. And they know that they have to slow down for those speed bumps. And it regulates their traffic so they're not going like crazy people.
You do, you do also see coming down, I think it's ninety-five, getting onto one oh one, when you come up to the tolls right there, you actually have grooves in the pavement. So when your tires are going over them, the pattern is different. I mean, you could do something like that, which just alerts people, hey, you're the rhythm on your tires is a little bit faster than you want to have, you know?
Somebody gonna hit me.
There's, there's options out there.
That's right.
Should we explore them? Counts aren't gonna really help even at intersections because that doesn't track speed.
I mean, I think it's worth just, you know, kind of dusting off that master plan section and, you know, taking a look at them and could have a discussion at a, at a work session.
If we have a work session, have some of the public invited that are, have the consent.
Actually, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
How does that work? Is it like a, we just write a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen? Like what comes of that?
Yeah. Well.
We rewrote that transportation chapter with these suggestions.
Yeah.
Right.
And then what?
Right.
Well, I think if you have citizen interest to really start to make some traction with that.
And it certainly sounds like there's a lot of talk on Facebook. I mean.
I mean, I guess the question is what, you know, is this the place for those folks to come? We've had the discussion, we've have it in the master plan. We've talked about these things.
Right.
But implementing these kinds of changes, whether it's, you know, these kind of rumble strips or these soft mounds.
Oh, yeah, that'll be the next phase, but we can still gather suggestions, you know, other things that they might have.
Have a conversation around it.
Conversation.
Let's certainly invite the selectmen.
Yeah.
But obviously, select boards ultimately.
Right, right. Yeah.
So I hope people will come, I guess, but I wanted not to drop that, that we talked about eleven years and intersection may fail. If the gas station comes in, they're gonna go for their mocha latte five miles faster down that road. Let's be honest. So, yeah, you know, I just, I'm just anticipating more traffic as, as this town grows. That, that's all.
Well, it's not just that. I mean, you know, we didn't talk about it earlier, but, you know, you've got Mills that wants to do more holiday traffic, you know, in a few years, so that'll be there. You, you've got the gentleman that was talking about developing his plots of land right there across from the Gulf. Of course, you're, in the next ten years, you're gonna see a lot more traffic down there. And you're gonna see a lot more people coming through Litchfield from, you know, London area, from, from Hudson and Do it to Fenrius, so.
Well, I think to that point, we will be, even though the, the current ten year plan, or I should say, the draft ten year plan will almost certainly be approved at some point, you know, by June. We will be in the process of soliciting projects for the next ten year plan starting, you know, late spring, early summer. So this is a really good time to have a conversation with the D O T about something like Corning Road, because if we're looking at failure in ten years and we're looking at a ten year plan, that, that seems to kind of align with maybe time to start talking about getting a project in the queue.
When you say solicit projects, you mean? What do you mean by that?
So every two years, we go through the process of updating the ten year plan. And that starts with kind of putting out the word for, for communities to suggest projects that they want to see in the ten year plan. In the ten year, this is the state's ten year transportation improvement.
Oh, I see. For some reason, I was thinking a town.
Yeah, I know, so. But it, it's also a time to talk about to D O T about, you know, projects that they could support in the ten year plan. It's obviously, you know, three A is state, so state's got to agree that this is a, a state project. I think it's a, starting with this discussion on this, you know, related to this project, I think it's a really good time to introduce this because if a bigger improvement is necessary there, we've talked about a turn lane. I don't know if one turn lane is sufficient. It doesn't do anything for exiting Corning onto three A.
I was gonna say that as well. I mean, that a left turn off of three A into Corning is great, except for the person trying to get off Corning that's going left.
Because that's where, that's the real delay. That's, you know.
The only thing that saves people coming off of Corning is that one person has a stop there and turn left.
Yeah.
And then you can, you can kick your gap, but.
But not if a person's passing them on the right. Which they will be with a left turn lane.
Game over.
Right. So that, that might make it harder to turn left at Corning because now you're watching two cars.
Sure.
Yeah.
Three, because you got the other one coming at you.
Because you got the other one coming the other direction. So that might be the solution. I don't know if that's a solution. So I think having the conversation with D O T is gonna be really important. But ultimately, there's gotta be an improvement for Corning as well as three A. Right, and my concern is that they take this project in isolation and look at it and say, okay, you know? But you can't, right? I mean, if, you know, you talked about Mills has this proposal, right, for this, this, this light show, this, this, you know? I mean, if that, if that's something becomes popular, you know, that's gonna increase. And the other things that may happen. So I mean, I don't know how you, how you can predict that, but, but we also can't look at it in isolation and say, well, right now it looks okay.
That's right.
You know? And the point that he made, which is right, is it's already a problem. I mean, Corning's already, you know, so, you know, yes, they can say, well, you know, it's not, we, we didn't create the problem, but they're gonna make it worse, you know? And so we have to sort of figure out how we address it. Because it is gonna get worse.
It will.
It, oh, yeah. It will.
So I, I, I know we probably don't want to set a date now for the workshop. We have to look at our schedule of clients coming in. But we can post that we will have a workshop on that and we would invite them to come in and see if there's other ideas that we could add.
Great idea.
And then if demand is there, they want it, we can go to the next level.
Yep. I think Mills is our next meeting, but off the double.
So I'll make a post. I don't want to.
So it won't be them. But then we could maybe.
We're here to help, right?
We can make that, have copies of that section of the master plan so that, you know, we can distribute it to people. We could talk about what's already there. Right? See if there's any other suggestions.
Yeah, absolutely. Like the rumble strips was great. I don't think we have that.
Jay, did you just want to quickly mention? I noticed in the email, there's a conference coming up for N R P C in May.
Yes. The LaBelle Winery. On May eleventh.
Okay. What is, what day is that? Is that a?
I think it's, I want to say it's a Thursday, but it might be a Wednesday, so I don't want to say wrong.
Just for everybody's.
And everybody should be getting an invitation to that, hopefully. It's a Wednesday. There was some training. We had an email yesterday.
And I was just about to mention that.